Good evening, everybody. A meeting in order, public comment. Everybody has a comment they'd like to make? Name, address, field to recognize? Come to the podium, you have three minutes. Seeing no rush to the podium at this point, move on to item number three. Matt Klow, West River Youth Association Director. Please come to the podium. What do you got for us?
I was coming in response to some suggestions I had on updating your field usage requests form and fees to better really serve you guys and recoup some costs and to avoid some issues that we had this previous year. You have any questions on what was sent? I guess I should start there.
Is this where I turn on the town administration comments and questions?
No.
Or?
No.
Not this time?
So, does that mean that the board is going to accept the changes and then I will bring a final M L U to the next meeting?
Sure.
That's exactly what it means.
Okay.
Would you like to know anything else?
Can I ask you a question? In terms of increased fees, so you don't think that's going to drive people away in terms of...
Compared to other local options, it is either in line or a lot cheaper. So, the primary reason for this is I felt that with some of the requests we had last season, the system was kind of being rigged in specific groups' favor. So, for example, you have it worded at $35 per usage. You know, a specific organization rented for an hour and a half, had four teams out on the field, all practicing and using the field, you know, as literally completely as you could for $35. I don't feel that the use on the field, the amount of wear and tear that it received, is warranted for that $35 per use. So, an hourly rate, I think, is much more appropriate. That matches any other field in the area that you would rent. And I feel like you would be recouping a lot of the, a lot more of the maintenance dollars that you're putting into the gorgeous facility that you have there.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. I mean, I'll ask you any other questions.
Item number four, Bill Homme, Conservation Commission Chair.
This is a follow-up to the Lifetime Recognition Award that the Select Board gave posthumously to Dick Wirick last winter. And his widow and three adult children would like to plant American chestnut saplings, one each, and a white pine that had been part of the service at Dick's memorial. The place of the planting is behind the safety complex and a little bit off to that side. There are four American chestnut saplings up there now that Dick had planted six or seven years ago. And last year, they started producing nuts for the first time. So, that is what's being proposed, and it's going to happen if you permit it on Earth Day, April 22nd, which is a Sunday, at two in the afternoon. And it will be something that will be open to the public for anyone who wishes to come and express themselves or merely to take in their memories. Yes?
So, it's going to have a plaque or something in the area?
My understanding is there will be a very small plaque that will be beside one of the trees.
Okay.
And this is something coming out of funds of Town of Lee or...
The Conservation Commission chose to purchase four saplings from a young man in town who has been raising them from nuts. And these have been under his care for three or four years. And so, we've paid $10 apiece for the four saplings. Everything else is taken care of.
Questions, comments?
Carrie asked my question, so I'm all set.
We're all set. Therefore, I move to grant the Conservation Commission permission to plant five American chestnut saplings and one white pine behind the public safety complex in honor of Dick Wirick and recognition of his lifetime achievement award. Further comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please vote yes.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Item number five, Paul Gazowski, Sustainability Committee Representative.
Paul Gazowski, 46, Lamprey Lane. Here with Matthew Raul, member of Sustainability Committee. Matt lives on Lee Hook Road. And we're here tonight for two reasons. We wanted to keep you briefed on things that we've been doing. And we've been working through a proposal that Matt came up with through our committee to create a Skill Share Network for Lee. And it's kind of an interesting proposal. And in your backup, there was explanation of what it's about. And I'm just going to turn it over to Matt, and he can explain it in his own words, and then we'll be available to answer questions. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Matt, 285 Lee Hook Road. I'll give you a quick context on where I'm coming from with this. I believe that everybody has a passion, and when they pursue that passion, they build some experience and skills associated with it. Furthermore, they then generate an interest to share that passion with other people. And oftentimes, when we can connect two people that share a passion, a lot of good can come from that. Not just for them, the individuals who then get to share that knowledge and experience, but then the more connections we make within the town, I believe, the stronger the town community becomes. So, my, with that in mind, I came up with this idea to develop a Skill Share Network. You've seen the proposal. I will kind of go through the implementation of it, which is up for discussion as well. So, my idea is that it would be hosted online. It would be a page that I built, and it just lists the interests that people have. The Lee Sustainability Committee will retain volunteers, like people who come to us, so that we find who are willing to share their passion and interest. And we, so the Lee Sustainability Committee retains the passion, the name, and the contact information of those people. We post just the list of topics. And then people who might be interested in getting to know more or exchanging those ideas, reach out to us through a contact form. We provide that contact form to the original volunteer, and then the volunteer has the opportunity to or not to engage with that person. So, there's not much more that I have to that, but I would be happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
The person, the person who sends in his contact, then if he's not contacted, he's just, I mean, if I understood it correctly, you have, you have somebody that has indicated a passion.
Yep.
You've advertised that, and somebody else comes in and says, "I'm interested in the same thing." So, he sends in his contact or her contact information.
Yeah.
This person then has a choice as to whether to contact him or not. What about this person? Does he have a choice to contact another name if it comes in for the same thing, or is he just...
Well, that person could absolutely volunteer to have that...
He could also become, if you would, a holder of that skill and...
Yeah.
People that send in following his interest, people that send in something, would go to both of these people or...
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Oh, I'm just trying to understand how it grows. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I think the point there is that more than one person in town can be a representative for any particular interest.
Yeah.
I think the more connections we make in that way, the better off we'd all be.
Okay.
Is this going to be tied to just the Town of Lee?
That was the intent with the, as part of the Lee Sustainability Committee. Yeah, it's a motive to join members of the town. And that's where, like, in the contact form, that's the first layer of, you know, scrutiny to make sure that we are connecting Lee residents with Lee residents.
Oh, you had another question?
Yeah.
Go ahead, please.
What kind of skills, when you think of this, what kind of skills?
Yeah, so I, on that, like, a real quick list I came up with was mathematics, raised bed gardening, beekeeping, automotive work, woodworking, fermentation, chickens, greenhouses, running, blacksmithing, oil painting, fantasy football. That's it. Like, that was what I came up with real quick. Like, that can go, hopefully, it will go on forever.
Yep.
And again, we retain some scrutiny over, like, not everything should be put up there. So, like, we'll, we'll do our due diligence to make sure that we're representing appropriate hobbies.
Mr. Bogby.
In Mr. Brown's scenario, what happens when the person who submits their form to engage in whatever this activity is, and the person that's the expert in it never contacts them? Is somebody going to close the loop? So, they're not sitting out there, "Well, she's putting my thing, but no one ever contacted me," so...
Yeah, that's a great question. So, if we encounter a situation like that, I would, I would ask that the, I would ask to be informed by the original volunteer that they are choosing not to engage in that. And then I can pass that back to the person who submit, and maybe offer them an opportunity to put their name in the habit for the same thing. And that would be another, it might open up more opportunities for them to meet people.
And advertising?
Exactly.
E-cryer, you can put it in there? What, anything else in terms of getting the word out to people or...
We haven't moved past that yet, but yeah, the original idea was, was starting in the e-cryer.
Okay. Thanks.
Tell me again, ownership? What was that again?
Sure.
Which one? I got X, I'm looking for responsibility issues and liabilities, so...
Well, it would be the town's liability because they would be considered town volunteers.
Okay. But you would maintain the site?
Correct. Yeah, I'm willing to take that on as, that's my responsibility.
But the site is within the Town of Lee?
It should be.
I'm trying to...
It's going to be linked off of the...
Linked off the Sustainability Committee?
Yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure that, see how that navigation's passed together.
As, as we began to walk this through, we began to walk it through Julie at the same time, and Primex took a look at it. And in, in the agenda form for tonight, the legal comments in the, on the agenda form reflect pretty much what Primex had in mind. But we thought it was a little, it's a little bit different than your typical proposal here.
And this might sound weird, but you envision this as 21 years and older?
I think we talked about 18.
18, okay.
Yeah, age of majority.
So, is this on our website or linked from our website to some other place?
I do.
I was not clear.
Yeah. My ambition is that it is linked to a website off of the Lee website.
So, it's not hosted by us?
Correct.
Right.
So, that, that, you're understanding, okay.
Yeah. That's what I was trying to get to, to see where, what the navigation was at that time.
But that doesn't leave any liability that might exist.
Do you have a, I know that you've got a procedure, you listed all the kind of implementation plan. Do you have a policy? Have you established a policy yet?
I think the answer is no. I mean, there's been discussions going on between Paul and the town, but...
Regarding...
Yeah, I guess...
Well, it's, it's a policy of operation as well, and you talked about, you know, you've made a listing of things which I think, beekeeping is stuff really exciting, different skills, carpentry and so forth. But you also said, somebody's got to make sure something doesn't come in that you feel to be not reputable or abuse. Is it just your decision, or is it a board or three people?
I think that will fall onto the Lee Sustainability Committee.
I mean, that's what I mean by a policy, some statements put together.
Well, I, I would like to think that as an advisory committee to the board, it would fall under town policy. But I don't know what specifically...
Now, I mean, for example, I think what you're, maybe one of the things you're getting at is, what activity would you consider to be unacceptable? In other words, if someone said, "I'm an expert pole dancer," is that going to be, "Okay, well, we'll open it up to anybody who's interested in pole dancing?" Or is, in other words, as part of the policy, are there certain things that you're going to try to put a wall up and say, "We're not going to do that"?
Do we have, so that we can branch off, do we have policies in place that might pertain to this?
We don't do anything like this, so I can't think of anything that would be similar, other than we're certainly under restrictions about, we can't discriminate because of reasons other than all the long list of reasons why we can't discriminate against people.
Yeah.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that we would have to accept any activity under this.
Yeah, I'm just trying to flesh this out. It's not that we're opposed to generating that. Might not be a bad idea.
All right. I'm excited about this, so I'd like to see it move forward, but it would be nice to have just a policy. It basically says, you know, just like you had told me about the navigation, who's going to be advising, would the Sustainability Committee be advising? And, and these examples of things that'll be neat. However, there'll be a board or a group of individuals who will make sure that nothing comes across. I mean, it's nice to have a policy in place.
And then I guess the other question that I...
You know, one pager.
That I would have is where you suggested that the, we'll call it the mentor and the mentee, so we can keep track of which one of the parties we're talking about. So, the mentor might, for some reason, decide that they don't want to take on a particular mentee? I think what I heard you say, they might just say, "I don't want to do it."
That's correct. I'm offering them the opportunity to or not to...
Right. So, that's where we would have to be careful and make sure that they're not rejecting the mentee because of some prejudicial reason, because then we'd be in a lot of trouble.
Yeah.
So, that's part of the policy. There might be legitimate reasons why the mentor doesn't want to do it.
Okay.
But you might want to try to think of some language around that, so that we don't get into a discriminatory situation.
So, I think what we're hearing is that, correct me if I'm wrong, that you're comfortable with the concept and the work we've done so far, you would like to see us develop perhaps a one-pager that addresses policy concerns and bring it forward to Julie or to the whole board?
I would say at this point, bring it to Julie first, and then she'll disseminate it out to the board. I don't mind moving forward, you know, making the action at this time, just as understanding that sometime in the future, a policy will come forward. Is that a fine with everybody?
Yeah.
So, we can move on it and move on both at the same time?
That is correct.
Okay.
Therefore, I move to grant the Lee Sustainability Committee permission to move forward with the Skill Share Network program as described.
Second. Shouldn't there be a policy in place before they roll this out?
Well, we can put it as a condition that a policy be brought forward.
Okay.
A true policy.
I withdraw my second, and you can tweak it if you want and include that.
So, I move to grant the Lee Sustainability Committee permission to move forward with the Skill Share Network program, limited, you know, to a policy being brought forward.
Okay, second.
And we have an understanding on that. So, you can work with Julie on that to take that part. Further questions and comments? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries.
Thanks, guys.
The second piece of this is more a briefing, and I don't think Jen Messner is here yet. She wasn't sure she would be able to make it on time. But Jen Messner, who's a resident of Wild Lee Falls Road, approached us, our committee, in December with an idea to host a low-carbon work study group. And this is something that's been done before. It was done a few years back under the sponsorship of the Energy Committee. And Jen administered some of the ladder workshops there. Noel Jost Cook administered the others. It's based on a workbook which the Energy Committee purchased in bulk back then. It's limited to about eight attendees or eight households. And the workbook is articulated in a series of lessons which help households reduce carbon emissions. The workshops meet once every other week for an evening, and there are eight sessions. Jen has, we have about 13 books in stock. And Jen has expressed an interest in doing the workshop, so she came to the committee. She presented the concept. We discussed it with her. We reached out to the Energy Committee to see if they were okay with it. Recently, they've expressed an interest in cosponsoring, so we'll work through that. So, it looks like it'll be cosponsored by our committee and the Energy Committee, and Jen is going to do it voluntarily. So, there aren't any costs. The books are in hand already. The households get to keep the book, since it's a workbook, you kind of work your way through the book. The publication of the book is through Chelsea Green Publishing of White River Junction, Vermont. Published, the book was published in about 2008. There are about 36 different lessons. Some of them need to be tweaked just a bit because the data has changed, but it's no big deal. So, our next step is we're drafting an article for the e-cryer to move this forward and to solicit volunteers for this, and see if we can get enough people put together for Jen to be able to do this. We're hoping to start sometime in April with it. And that's kind of like where we stand, and there she is. So, I heard that door open, and I said, "That's got to be Jen." So, I, I'm walking my way through this, and so I've kind of, I've done a brief history on your connection with us and a little bit about the workshop connection and stuff. So, if you, if you want to join me up here, that'd be okay, if there are any questions. But that's kind of like where we, we have it at this, this point in time. We're excited about it. We're grateful that Jen approached us, and, and she has experience in this, and it's a, it's a, it's a pretty, it's a pretty cool thing to be doing. So, we'll take questions, or if you have any, you missed what I said, then I can kind of say what I said.
What he said.
He promised a lot of you.
Comments or questions to the board?
No, I think it's a good idea. Thank you for doing this. So, that's the book?
This is the book.
So, can you get more, or is it, they don't publish it anymore? Oh, so you could if you wanted to do...
Yeah. I have 13 remaining that the Energy Committee originally bought, I can see one over there, which will be made available free of cost to households in Lee. I did purchase extra ones on my own because I was doing study groups, and households from beyond Lee wanted to participate, so I keep them separate. I know which is which. And yeah, I tend to, in order to cut cost and packaging for shipping, I tend to buy at least 20 at a time, because that's when the bulk discounts kick in. So, if we need more, I can get more.
We have budget available to support that.
And the announcement of the workshops are in the e-cryer?
We're working on the wording.
Yeah, we're working on the wording and the, and the dates.
Okay.
So, I'm quite there yet.
Very exciting.
So, do you need eight, or you have up to eight that you can do? So, if somebody, you have like six people, can you move forward still, or do you have to wait for two more to join?
I've done it with three households.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
With more, you get more ideas, of course, more energy. With too many, it gets a little, little hectic, and you want to maybe break it up into two groups.
Okay.
But we'll just kind of flex with what happens.
Thanks. Sounds exciting. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Oh, thank you.
Item number six, Randy Stevens, Highway Supervisor.
Maybe we can start out with the quotes. We sent out the quotes for four different services products. Catch Base and Cleaning, the cheapest one was Hartigan, and we've used them in the past. The nice thing about them is they don't, even though they come from the lot, they just charge us when they get here and when they leave. I'd recommend we go with them. Company just got bought out, so I don't, hopefully, they'll provide the same zero. Line striping. We've used industrial traffic lines the last several years, they, because they come in cheaper and kind of handy because they're close by, as you notice, the rest of them are all quite a ways off, so. If it rains or something like that, it's not too handy, they have to come back, it's a long distance. So, I'd recommend we go with industrial traffic lines, which is the lowest price. Cutting edges, we got a few more quotes this year, no more interest. I just, off to the right of the chart, I kind of put in what I thought we would need for cutting edges. We're getting pretty low, the way this winter's been, and we had to outfit the new truck we got by, so. One reason I came in tonight rather than putting this off. So, I'd recommend we go with Viking, who is the same Viking studies, the same company we bought our new cloud truck from. Assume when they're going to deliver them. If they don't, I'd, I'd go with Jordan as a second backup. Gravel stones, a little more complicated usually, because not all one vendor, one vendor doesn't always produce what we need. But we've had real good luck with a gravel from Peter Hugel Trucking. It's very close, you can make two trips an hour, no problem. We go to Hartman's, it takes us an hour, even though the price is cheaper. So, I did a little chart down there, it kind of shows that, you know, if you can only make a trip an hour, it costs quite a bit in trucking, electric, so. So, I recommend we go with Peter Hugel Trucking, with Hartman as a backup, and Newmarket Sand is for peystone, if we need any.
Those ones that are highlighted on?
Yes, they are.
Comments or questions?
I can't, I touched the screen and it went...
Oh, you got to talk to Jen. You touched the screen.
Jeez, my paper didn't have a problem.
Oh, yeah.
It might have in the near future.
Sounds like a threat. Therefore, I move to authorize the Highway Supervisor into agreements with a highlighted vendor shown in the included spreadsheet, using the vendor which provides the best overall value to the town for each product or service.
Second.
Questions or comments?
No.
Hearing none? All of them in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is the summer paving program. I've had a hotter job with it this year than we normally do or ever did, also because there's a lot of roads that, all the roads, just about all the roads on the list need shimming or extra work. There isn't any that you can just pave, or you shouldn't just pave, so. Maybe I'll go right to the notes on the backside. Pretty much said they all need something. Thompson Mill, Guile, and Pinkham West, they don't have very stable bases under them. We've, we've ground up Thompson Mill Road in the past. We put fabric on it and everything, but it still doesn't, hasn't held real well. Just one section of it is still kind of bad. I believe you'll get a better price per ton if you do phase one and phase two at the same time, bid it out at the same time. Last time, we sort of discussed just doing the shimmin' with this year's money. I think if we do that, if we just go out for the shimmin', we're not going to get a real good price, but you never know for sure. April's a good month to go out. If you go out right now in March, they're sort of feeling each other out, trying to see what the other company's going to do, you might, very inconsistent. If you wait till May and, May and June, they've got a lot of their work, so they don't, typically they don't bid quite as low. And both options, there's phase one and phase two. Phase one is the shimmin', phase two is the paving, which would occur after July 1st. The shimmin' would occur before. And option A, shims and overlays all the listed roads, and would list Thompson Mill, Transfer Station, and the Highway Garage as options.
How did you get to that?
Technical problems.
Boys with toys.
Option B, shims and overlays the main roads in Greater Shims and Seal Coats, Thompson Mill, Pinkham and West, and Pinkham West and Gower Road. And you still could list options. I think we're going to have to delete something. If you delete Pinkham, 64,006.92, you can take off. If you delete Thompson Mill, it's 44,000, you can take off. Also on Thompson Mill, we got a couple culverts we have to replace because they're within a quarter of a mile of a river. They take a full-blown wetlands permit. So, next time, I should have bids quotes back for that, the next time I come in, how much that'll be. But the permitting process takes a long time, we might not even be able to do Thompson Mill next year anyway, so. I would, I would recommend we go out to bid for phase one and phase two, and list, like an option A, and list the optional ones as optional on the bid. But this doesn't have to be decided tonight, but we can give you some feedback, we can redo it, or... We can redo it, or revisit the final time, hopefully next time, and then get the bids out in April. And also, it depends whether you want me to do it, or you want the next guy to do it, someone. I should have an answer for you next time, but what my intent retires.
Any opinion on Option A or B?
Can I clarify one thing? You suggest going out to bid one time. If we did that, can we structure it so that, because you don't have access to hundred seventy-four thousand afterwards?
You do, Option A needs to be completed by before July first. Option B needs to be completed between July first and September fifteenth. Or Phase Two, I should say. Phase One and Phase Two. Like I say, we can, we can give you a little feedback. I can redo it. It's just one option, and we can discuss it next time briefly. Or if you want to let me know after you've looked at it again. If you don't give, I know.
So, in terms of Option A, that total's three hundred and forty thousand, but you're saying you only have access to three twenty-four, so what would you remove?
Well, probably Thompson Mill, I'm guessing.
How bad is Thompson Mill?
How bad is it?
You said there's some places that are not so good, plus you got to put in culverts.
Right. And there's, there's really one spot that's bad. The rest of it isn't too bad. The rest of it, we put some gravel in. We did it, when we ground it up, we did it two sections. We did like from Lee Hill Road to the top of the hill. A little driveway goes into the conservation easement. And we didn't do a whole lot of work to it. The next year, we did the rest of it, and we put more gravel and fabric, and that section has stayed better.
I just would hope that we wouldn't pave it and then put the culverts in, because then you have to pump it up, so.
And that's, you know, I won't know. You know, I, I think it could be ninety days anyways before you get the permits, after they get the paperwork, you know, so.
It might be. So, it's relatively short. It's not six months, or?
Well, you know, I don't know. I guess I don't, yeah, I don't know. I'd say it's, it's between three and six months to get the permits. If the road agent wasn't such a slacker, it would have all been done by now.
Yeah, we're lucky to get rid of him.
You're not gonna have to worry about that soon.
Well, since there's more money to be spent, maybe we should do Option A.
No, I think we should, I think we should reserve some money for ship, you know, in case the next spring is bad, or, and I always keep a little reserves. You just never know what the next spring's gonna bring. Or you want to do some cracks, you know, or the next guy wants to do something.
Might be beneficial to do A, and then just take Thompson Mill out? And give us time to do the culverts, and then just do it next year? Would that?
Yeah, I mean, they closed the road off years ago because of mud, so I guess you can do it if you had to. It's a, it's just a pretty poorly constructed road. And Gower Road's no better, but, you know, it's a...
Does that still get flooded?
Yeah, yeah.
Every once in a while?
I, I heard they took quite a few beaver out of there, so. We went, we went out, well, the guys walked out the other day and took out the dam. It's loaded with water, but the water was up against the road, you know, a couple weeks ago. Now, the whole road ought to be raised up a couple feet, but going through that wetland, I don't know how much of a permitting process that would be. So, I guess we could move on this, so we give the authorization to go for bid. Unless you have any problems with that.
No, just if we could do maybe A, and then just take Thompson Mill out?
Or you want to still list as an option? I mean, that way we don't have to...
Because this is an option, but I kind of like your idea in terms of holding something back just in case. So, yeah. Hopefully, we can get the highway garage, the transfer station done, so it's in the same timeframe as this.
Highway garage's never been done. It's just passed.
I mean, the transfer station. Transfer station, so.
So, the, the transfer station, a lot of it's the same way. We had a couple, you know, we all do loads on top and cover over the gravel. So, it's never official, a lot of it's never been officially paved. A lot of it has. All right, so you're saying just go out to bid? And I'm gonna give you authorization to go to bid. To authorize the Highway Supervisor of paying bids for paper shimming as the current fiscal year highway funds and SB thirty-eight funds allow with work to be done and billed before June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, using, including spreadsheets as a guide or... And also, the, to obtain bids on Phase One for paper shimming, completed by June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, and Phase Two paving overlay to be completed by September fifteenth.
Are you looking at me?
Yeah. Yeah, okay. That was all of Option A, right?
Option A.
Yeah.
With the opportunity to remove Harvey Mills?
Thompson Mill.
Thompson Mills.
Yeah.
We good? Do I hear a second?
I already did.
Fast tonight, I tell you. Comments? Hearing all of them in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Karen Rossi. I need the county administrator.
Hey, guys. So, I wanted to come update you on a few things that are happening at the circle. And, you know, the little house next to Dollar General? That has been sold, and it's going to be torn down. And there's going to be a mobile hot dog stand there.
A what?
Mobile hot dog stand.
A mobile hot dog stand?
Well, Mr. Budby wanted a restaurant.
There you go.
No, that was not.
I think for May, hot dogs?
It's where they sell mobile hot dogs. Mobile hot dogs?
No. He's gonna be going for the planning board in April. He thinks, as long as he has, he believes there's a survey of the property. If there's not a survey of the property, that'll delay him a little bit, and then he will go to the planning board after that, but...
So, is it a building, or is it just like a?
It's a mobile hot dog. Little mobile trailer.
So, it's kind of like what's across from Car Works there?
Yes. I haven't seen pictures of it to know if it's as nice as that one. I'm not visualizing it to be like that. I'm visualizing it to be a hot dog cart. But we'll find out.
So, you said it was gonna be ripped down?
The building's gonna be ripped down. He's gonna leave a portion of it in the back. There's a shed in the back he's gonna leave for storage. But the house itself is gonna be ripped down.
I love hot dogs.
So, that just leaves one real bad place left in that strip, that, the old come and go. So, that's good. Yep. The two oh one Highland is going to, they got their AOT approval, so they're gonna start construction of the other storage facility in April as soon as the ground thaws, and they can do that. The Cheney subdivision has been sold to Chinburg Builders. They went back to the planning board, and they got rid of the duplex lots in the little, in the middle. And now, they're all going to be single-family homes, and I believe it's thirty-five houses, not thirty-six. They're going to, that's the next agenda item. They're gonna start construction of the road as soon as the weather allows. They were going to start next week, but I don't think that's gonna happen now. And then, they're gonna put building permits starting those houses in June. And then, wanted to update you on the numbers so far. So, we've got so far in revenue, thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars for building permit revenue this year. About twelve hundred dollars of that is miscellaneous recent fees that we've adopted. And it's a estimated cost of construction of just under four million. Well, four million, one hundred fifty-four thousand dollars. Jim Daley's storage, a hundred thousand square foot storage building, they anticipate being occupied mid-April. They're almost finished up with that, and then they're gonna go into starting the thirty thousand square foot building that's already approved by the planning board as well. So, that will be a good source of tax revenue. And then, on the next agenda item that I have, do you guys have any questions? Before I go to the next?
Is he doing anything with the lot that's next to one twenty-five Cheney? Or is that just, that's like five acres?
He's got, yeah, that's seventeen acres. He's, Public Service made an agreement with him years ago about doing some storage out there, which is what he's doing there now, EverSource. But other than that, he's still actively for sale, but he has nothing on that. He's, I don't think he's in a hurry now that he's sold that. The other part with the EverSource agreement. I don't know what he can do with the EverSource agreement. I don't know how long that's for. EverSource is redoing the line. They just got a zoning board approval to upgrade the, the line and replace some of the poles in the wetland at the last meeting, so that'll be a while.
I wonder if you could just update us about Bedrock Gardens and so forth?
So, Bedrock Gardens has been going before the planning board for site plan review. And at the January meeting, excuse me, the February meeting, the planning board voted to send out their uses out for legal opinion to see if the proposed use, proposed list of uses is actually allowed by our regulations. Because when they started the process, it was the understanding that it was just the buying, selling, and the cultivating of plants. Well, then, as it progressed down the path, there's a whole other list of events that they've had and want to have. So, the planning board sent that list out to a different attorney because Bedrock Gardens and, and we share the same attorney. We've all, both used Donahue, Tucker, and Chedelel. So, we went to an outside attorney who's Laura Spector Morgan from the Mitchell Group, and they just work with towns, with the exception of every so often, they do pro bono work, which was how we had met Laura Spector Morgan several years ago. She did some pro bono work for Peter McDonald in town, so we were familiar with her. So, she agreed to work for us, and in reviewing our regulations, she noticed that it was an absolute oversight. We actually never adopted, we adopted the definition of ag tourism, but we never, and we defined agriculture, but we never said that ag tourism was an allowed use to the extent of, basically. We did adopt it to be allowed as a farmer's market and a roadside farm stand, but not on the property as, as a standalone use, so to say. So, the uses that they can do is the agriculture use, which is a buying, which is, excuse me, the harvesting, growing, cultivating of the plants. And they can sell their branded items that, you know, like the hats and the T-shirts that say Bedrock Gardens. But as far as the ag tourism uses, because it's two-pronged, we didn't, we don't allow ag tourism uses unless it's on a roadside farm stand or farm market. They can't do them, and the ag tourism use has to be similar to the farm use. So, in order to proceed with anything other than the growing, cultivating, and sales of flowers and the branded items, they need to go to the zoning board for variance for all of their other things that they wish to do out there. So, that, the application has been suspended for a maximum of six months, allowing them to go to the zoning board to seek approval. And if their approvals are granted, they can return without having to start over again.
Does this only affect that property?
No.
So, any business?
It is going to affect other ag tourism events as well. We're gonna meet with the attorney, hopefully by the end of the week, and see what we need to do about the other businesses and ag businesses in town.
So, what's, so what's their situation at this particular point? That they're proceeding with events or things?
The planning board did not give them permission to proceed with any events, other than...
No, I mean these other businesses, besides Bedrock.
The other businesses currently, right now, I have, I shouldn't answer that until I speak with the attorney.
Because it sounds like they're in violation as well.
Most of them aren't doing anything this time of year, so hopefully...
I'm thinking the summer, so...
Of cour-, yes, we need to have this resolved by the end of the month, but, so, yeah.
Lovely.
Yes.
Thank you for the update.
You're welcome. That was, it was a very interesting find that was, caught us all off guard.
While you're there, could you kind of give us where we are with the Speedway sale?
We met with the new, the fire chief, myself, the building inspector, and Emery met with the new owner today. They close on Thursday morning. The transaction will hopefully be complete. And they're gonna do some cosmetic updates. Nothing at this time is proposed to be any major changes. We went over, I went over my end of it, the fire chief went over his, you know, his requirements for details, but nothing, there's no changes other than a couple of facelifts on the Judge's Tower. And they're contemplating in the future building a pavilion for, instead of the beer tent, a pavilion. And they talked about the process for that. Which would both be, the pavilion that'll live in a beer tent would be a great improvement.
Okay, thank you.
So, on the Cheney-Chinburg bond, Walter Cheney currently has a restoration bond when it was a gravel pit. And the plan is approved with the reclamation to be done in phases. As the reclamation is completed, the rest, the reclamation restoration bond will be reduced in return to the developer. So, that figure is seventy thousand dollars. So, that letter of, the Chinburg is replacing Cheney's passbook savings account with a letter of credit for seventy thousand dollars. So, that's what that seventy thousand dollar figure for. Jay Stevens went out in two thousand and thirteen. He's our town engineer, and he did a survey of the area and determined an acceptable bond figure, which is where the seventy thousand dollars came up with. And I believe in your packet is the letter from Jay from two thousand and thirteen explaining that. And then, the fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars is called a restoration bond. Because they're not bonding right now, Chinburg, they're only required to put a bond up, they only put the road halfway in, and then they walk away from the project. We need a bond figure so we can replant, or re-vet, or re-grass, or however we choose to. So, that's what the fourteen thousand, six hundred dollar bond is for. It's for, called a restoration bond. And after the base code of payment is in, then they will bond for the maintenance bond, et cetera. But that won't be done probably till June. So, I just need your acceptance on, the planning board accepted the fourteen thousand, six hundred last Thursday night in the planning board meeting. Mr. Chairman La Course was present. So, I just need you guys to authorize Julie to accept the bond on behalf of the town, and then the letter, excuse me, the letter of credit. When the letter of credit comes in, Julie will review it and accept it. And then, they can move on and start the construction.
Who's the letter of credit from?
Their bank. Do you know who their bank is?
Um, I wanna say PennTucket, but I'm not positive. They didn't say. They didn't say. They just said their bank will be sending a letter of credit, and they can't have it until Monday, Tuesday, tomorrow.
So, what's the town's position if that bank goes belly up? That's not a very good bank.
We've accepted letters, right? Don't we already have a letter of credit with that bank?
Mm-hmm.
Still doesn't answer the question.
I would say, I would, I don't know.
Doesn't mean...
I don't know the answer to that.
Usually, when the town accepts letters of credit on different things, like in terms of, you know, I don't know if the trustees still do it, but it's usually on a very large financial institution, so. I'm just thinking down the road in terms of banks have been going belly up lately, but, you know, just like ten years ago, we had problems. So, I'm just thinking in terms of down the road.
I don't know much about PennTucket Bank, other than...
I've never heard of them.
Oh, I have. Not that I have millions, but...
So, what's our other option if the board doesn't want to take a letter of credit? A bond or cash? We, we would prefer not to take cash, because then we have to keep track of the cash.
As far as accepting a letter of credit, our regulations allow us to accept a letter of credit, so...
I'm not against a letter of credit. I'm against it in terms of what it's drawn on, or who, what institution it's drawn on. That's my issue. I'm not against a letter of credit. I'm against who is it drawn on? How financially viable is this particular bank?
Well, I don't know that we're, we can't determine that.
And we also...
So, we either accept a letter of credit, or we have to do something.
Eighty-four six. I don't think Chinburg, I shouldn't speak for Chinburg Builders, but they're a very reputable company. Eighty-four thousand, six hundred dollars for Chinburg Builders is probably like five bucks for me. Really, I mean...
That's my only concern.
Yeah. And we have a bond with PennTucket Bank already that we're holding for a different development in town.
I, I think Mr. Budby brings up a valid point, though maybe not stopping this particular letter of credit, but however, maybe the planning board should look into something along that line.
Okay. Would that be insured by the FDIC, a letter of credit?
I don't know.
I don't know.
All right, I think these are questions...
I'd have to read the letter of credit when we get it.
Okay.
I'm just looking in terms of managing liability for the town, because we don't want to get stuck, you know, like if somebody goes belly up in terms of the bank, so. That's the only thing I'm looking at.
We might look at that as a planning board, look at some policy issues of... Mr. Budby, it says size of bank or capability and so forth. However, in lieu of that, I move to accept a letter of credit for the Chinburg subdivision on Pinkham Road. Do I hear a second?
What, all of a sudden?
Isn't it brown? Do I hear a second?
Yeah. And I think I need to get you to do this.
I thought you were... Any further discussion? Are those in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries.
One last thing. I don't, I put it, I submitted a vacation request, but I don't think I needed to. I'm going on a family vacation the end of the month. And I'll be out for five workdays.
I'll just let the town administrator know it's fine.
Thank you.
Well, one more thing while you're there. It's probably just out the, outside the tunnel. People keep asking me, if you go down Packers Falls Road towards New Market, there's a big clearing that's going on down there, and they keep asking me about it all the time, and I have no idea what's going on, but I don't think it's in Lee.
It's that same thing I sent you an email about.
Packers Falls Road? Or Wednesday Hill Road?
Wednesday Hill, excuse me.
Oh, that's a house lot. Keith, I mean Kevin Strong and Deanna Freeman's next to Christmas House, the little, the brown house.
And they just did a clear cutting or something?
They built a house in there.
This is why people think this is in the tunnel of Lee.
Oh, then, are you talking about, Randy said there's one in Durham.
There's a big clearing right past the Lee line in Durham.
That's the one.
Oh, okay.
Off the right.
What is it?
I don't know. Looks like it's, looks like it's gonna be a field or anything.
Part of an easement.
Oh, it's part of a conservation easement?
And it's, I heard it's habitat for...
Cotton tail?
Cotton tail.
Yeah, so cotton tail habitat, say clear cut, and then they build these little stick piles for, what they look like, for the cotton tail habitat to go and escape the wildlife. We have one behind our house.
Landlubbeaver Dan.
Yeah, what they look like.
That's good. Okay. Thank you very much. We learn something every day. Julie?
So it's the time of year where we are letting everyone know that you wanna be on another board, committee, commission, and so on. So as we were doing that, our existing board, committee, and commission pile, policy, excuse me, says that we are going to do a criminal background check on all of the members of the recreation commission and all of their volunteers, but we have not been doing that. So I just thought, because the timing was that we were so close to this meeting, I would bring it to the board and, I guess, one, see whether you want us to be enforcing that policy, which we're happy to do, or two, whether you wanna revise the policy. State law allows us to do criminal background checks on people who work with children and the elderly, but we are not required. And then that gets us into how far do we take this, because I don't know quite frankly how many volunteers, for example, they have for the Easter egg hunt.
Easter egg hunt.
But we would have to do all of those volunteers.
I mean, you have some people that just volunteer for the big occasions.
Fishing derby.
Others that are relatively steady on the commission or whatever.
Tom, next question.
It makes sense to me, it makes sense to me that for those people that are full-time, if you would, on a committee, with a recreation committee or anybody else that deals with children, that we should do the background check. Doesn't take long. It's not a big deal, but for those that just volunteer for an event, like my rocket day or the fishing derby or whatever, I think we'd be, be safe with just having them help for that day, and so be it.
That would mean we'd have to modify this language, correct?
What's the, what does the background check consist of? How deep do you go?
It does not have to be a federal background check. We can just do a state criminal background check.
So does that catch people that...
Still involves fingerprinting.
But does that catch people that might have some undesirable history from, like Wyoming? Are we gonna catch those people?
I don't believe so.
Then it's kind of...
He might be able to shed some light on this.
Can the chief shed a light on that?
Well, you're only gonna get where you run it. So if you're on a New Hampshire, you're only gonna get New Hampshire. You'll get a hit if they are wanted somewhere, but other than that, you, you have to be specific to where you want the criminal history from. So in the past, any employees, it's just been a state check?
So you're not gonna catch somebody who's a pedophile from Wyoming that moves to Lee and wants to...
Well, if they're a registered sex offender, then they've gotta register when they come to New Hampshire. That follows them.
Okay.
So we would know that. But as far as the criminal history, anything that they were convicted on, in that particular state will only show up if you ask from that state. But again, you know, the employees in town, we only do...
I think the issue is more your due diligence, is that you would go ahead and you perform the check. If it comes back negative, it comes back negative. You can't be responsible.
If you have a policy that says you're gonna do it, you should be doing it. Otherwise, get rid of the policy. You actually got more liability if it says you'll be doing it and you don't do it, and then something happens.
Exactly. But then you have to tweak the policy if you get what you suggested.
Right, I think it's, I think with, it's like our Brown says, we probably should tweak it at this point. Can you, whenever you make those modifications?
So just do a criminal background check on the members of the recreation commission?
Is that what you mean by full-time volunteers?
Those that are part of the committees or, or...
Yes. Can you read that section of the...
And actually, it's expanded beyond that, because it would, the way it's written, it would touch members of all of the commissions, because volunteers who work with or around children or elderly persons enter the homes of citizens or collect or manage money will be subject to a criminal background check per RSA 419B. All volunteers of the recreation commission will be subject to a criminal background check prior to being appointed as a volunteer.
So it's just the appointed members? So wouldn't this recover the people who help out for Easter egg hunting?
And you could also, on the application, ask for a previous address. That would have, if they moved here from Mass or Connecticut, you could, if you wanted to, ask, pass, run a state through there.
And what's the cost for this?
Fifty or seventy-five dollars now.
A piece?
Forty-seven, fifty, yeah.
So how many volunteers do we have that this would affect?
Well, there's what, five members of the recreation commission?
But you're talking about doing all of them. It says all of the ones that...
Well, oh, it would be whoever handles the money, say, for the ag commission, the heritage commission, and the conservation commission, so I don't know. There would be at least three.
Okay. So it doesn't say all the members, just the ones that handle money, going to people's homes and...
Well, or work with or around children or elderly persons. So that's again where, if you have volunteers doing the Easter egg hunt right now, you could read this policy and that would extend to those people.
The way it is stated now.
Right.
Because the way it's stated now, the volunteers is, the first line includes all volunteers that work for children and money, then is a special secondary line that looks at the recreation commission. I almost feel like you should drop the recreation commission thing and just make it a general thing, no matter who it is, if you're working with children. I mean, there's no reason to focus directly on that particular committee.
Then that would include the people who work on the Easter egg hunt, all of them?
None of them.
But that's not what it says.
No, that's not what this says.
That's not what this says. What I'm trying to do is make it generalize without focusing on the recreation committees, or anybody that works with children, no matter if it's recreation committee or any other committee, they get a background check.
If they're full-time or not, volunteer-wise?
Well, none of them are full-time, so.
His definition of full-time.
Appointed members of the committee or commission.
Does it say that now?
No, we didn't.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'd like to tweak it, and then follow through later, break it next time, and we could, but we should be doing this. I mean, obviously, at this point, it's something we can state, and once we finally go through it for ECR, there's no surprise to anybody.
So, Chief, sorry. It was too quick. So staff recovered. What about elected officials?
I don't know where they draw the line.
And I'm not sure what elected officials work with children or the elderly.
I work with the money for the heritage commission.
Oh, well then, if you want, well, we just said appointed members.
Appointed.
If you want us...
Not elected, that's weird.
Right.
I'd rather leave it appointed. We'll stop there and see how it goes.
Okay, thank you. Just a reminder to everyone that the election, the ballot session is tomorrow, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the Public Safety Complex.
And you're okay with your assignment? Because we assigned you, because you didn't come last night. You okay?
Yeah, sure, no problem.
I had a brief conversation with the transfer station manager this morning. He's gonna get me some more information, so I'm maybe bringing just some further information to the board, but it now costs us money to get rid of mixed paper recyclables. We used to make money, now it costs us money. The short reason for that is the Chinese government late last year put a ban on imported mixed paper and plastics. So that could end up being good, because there may end up being a market in the United States where they used to have to compete for the materials, and now they might have access to those materials, but for right now, it is not a moneymaker. It costs us money.
And we got a lot of it, don't we?
And we got a lot of it. So I just mentioned that, because again, in my continuing push to try to get us to reduce the amount of paper that we use in the town of Lee, now you can really no longer think, well, I put it in the recycling bin, and the town makes money on it, because now we don't make money on it anymore. It costs us money to get rid of it, so.
But it's less than MSW.
It's less than MSW.
So that's something.
Yes. But the numbers that I'm gonna wanna work with to get from Mr. Van Inken are how much we used to get in that one particular, you know, for revenue, and so what we might be looking at as terms of a revenue shortfall.
Always something exciting. It's always something exciting. Anything else?
I don't know how many tons of it we have sitting there, but we got a bunch.
We got a bunch. Anything else, Julie? Moved to accept the consent agenda is presented.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all appearing, please aye.
Well, did we get the issue cleared up on H?
H?
I believe it's a check for the conservation commission.
I believe that to be the case as well.
I am checking with the heritage commission.
Okay.
To see to what extent they, on an annual basis, incur monitoring efforts.
They usually get a separate check for $600. Yours is usually a thousand, because they don't monitor the Tuckaway Farm.
No.
Two properties, Tuckaway Farm and...
Randall, because they have this heritage easement on Randall, and a heritage easement on Flag Hill, and they get $600 usually each year. You can usually get a thousand, so I think this check is there.
This is the conservation commission. Regardless, state law requires the select board to accept the funds, so.
So I hear a second?
Aye.
Discussion, all in favor, please say aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
That was great.
S-H-E-N.
Nor do you.
Telephone?
Yeah, but maybe modified.
His telephone, his mother and stepfather.
Some of them.
Her name is Phyllis White.
Skill and then don't have the phone number.
They live right at the corner of...
Not to you.
Not just that, well. Right there. First house.
It's only recorded voice.
I don't believe so. It may be, and he doesn't do a lot of this.
Do you want to track stuff over here?
No.
He was...
I can't, they harvest here from a couple surviving trees in the town of Forest.
What are they?
That's the Swiss.
Oh, oh, is, oh, is it mighty key, sir? Yes. Two.
Get that Vegas? Did you get that Vegas?
One of our giveaways.
So you should charge 14, 16. He's super nice.
I just wanna be fair, but also ask. I've, I've met him before, but he's very like that.
Yeah, he was. He said he wasn't, he has one big person, he wasn't gonna move up about a bit, and he wasn't gonna move down. Took daddy bottom or his truck? Well, he said, yeah.
At times it's supposed to start snowing.
Three, two or three AM? Two or three AM, 2:00 AM is the latest thing I saw for... Just getting messed up. Yeah, what do you got?
Probably thirty, that can be.
Yeah, it was pretty sorry.
Yeah.
Probably wasn't that long ago.
One, actually one. And then probably the one, two, probably three. And then probably one. The other thing I have is there's a listing, says he was selling some airplanes.
A what?
A listing of airplanes that he's selling. There's a list of airplanes and its qualifications and all of it.
Oh, really?
I can bring that to you.
Nineteen thirty-seven.
Interesting.
So who is Sylvia Bogby to you?
I'm trying to figure out.
An ancestor or something.
I haven't had time to do it, but yeah. But you're related to the Bogbys in that area, so.
Oh, we are?
Yeah, we're related. My ancestor is a member of the Sons of America Coalition, and my ancestor is Daniel Bogby, and he was from that particular area, so.
Where did this come from?
I have no idea.
Oh, way back, look at that.
It was like a bunch of stuff, A team, A through I, so. That's John. That's John. Well, you have to like print it and write it.
John, what are you using, a magic wand?
Joe Penney.
You should have the wand.
Joe Penney.
He's joking.
Oh, Joe.
That must've all been hurting.
And the boy said, every time the brother's great, that'll change the life of that man.
Good.
So she sent him this email, said she wants all sorts of information, and then she sent it back to him. And Mark, I don't know, his own phone. If they can't, they're not going to have a call on charge. He's a new to it.
Yeah, because then it comes back to you.
The first time in all, he's... Oh my God, I said to myself, well, geez.
Yeah.
I'm shocked.
Oh, my little mouse. I, I always need something to write on. Unless you want me to... I'm going to read my cup.
It's raining.
That's mine, I take it back with me.
Ouch. Okay, these two things don't go together.
You see no way, you don't hear no way, always be... Is it it? I move to go into non-public session, RSA ninety-one dash A colon three two P. Wait a second.
Which is?
Information from the attorney.
Ro Colville.
Mr. Bogby?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. LaCourche, yes, motion carries. Town administrator, join us, please. I move to the seat of the session.
Senator?
Ro Colville, Mr. Bogby?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. LaCourche, yes, motion carries. Miss Alani, is, uh, unfinished business?
Um, are we closing tomorrow?
That is a good question, it's, the weather's looking pretty bad. Uh, Durham's closed, the schools are closed.
Yeah, U of H's closed, I would suggest that we close.
I guess I'm tempted to close, so...
Aye.
I've already talked to the town clerk, and at the end of tomorrow evening, she's going to email me the results, and then I'll do an email blast, because I can do that from home, to let everybody know what the concussion results are.
No, I think it's a good idea to close, it sounds like it's not going to be so good, so you said that they're going to have police out there? Is that what you said in your last email?
Uh, I talked to Randy about that, and then I got communication back from the chief that suggested that he was going to assign somebody to it.
And Randy's going to keep the area open, or his personnel will, that's why.
Plus, I know it's helpful to him to not have to worry about clearing the town hall parting law.
Exactly, exactly.
Um, and then...
Transfer station?
Do we want to suggest to the tran, that the transfer station closes, or tell them that the transfer station should close?
Well, if we're closing the town...
Yeah.
It's good, probably should close everything at this point.
So only emergency personnel are...
Okay. And maybe this will be the last... Yeah.
Including... And didn't the, the state say they're going to send people around to make sure the board of selectmen are there at the voting?
Well, it's SB three.
Yeah, SB three.
SB three.
The other thing I had is, um, the Lamprey Trucking Group meets this Thursday, and we got pricing back for the truck. I'm not sure if we're going to accept it, in terms of what they think it's worth, so we're going to have a discussion on Thursday. So there might be a cost to us, um, to get out of the trucking business. It's not going to be very much, we're talking thousands, the most ten thousand, probably a lot less than that. But, um, we're hoping to meet on Thursday to talk about that, so...
Mr. Brown?
No.
Please. Julie? Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.